We will call the meeting to order at 4:30 PM. I am Samantha Carol, by the way, Susan, hello.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we will start with the agenda. We are doing mostly remote attendance. We do have some of staff in the building. It looks like everybody chose to stay safe and stay home. So we are not requiring physical attendance at the meeting. So we will move on to the next business item of business, which is a swearing in of Susan. So, Robert?
No swearing.
Susan, I am not prepared to swear you in right now, but maybe I can grab a document so we can do it later in the meeting.
Okay.
That's okay.
I can pull that up for you probably really quick, Robert.
Because I don't think we, well, I mean, we could start the meeting, but...
You would have a, your new quorum number is four, whether you have six or five, so you're, you should be okay. You've got four swearing in members. Let me do a quick, let me do a quick search for that.
I feel like we're the Brady Bunch. Like, I've got everybody's little faces up.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Mental. I can, I can share that, I can share that oath with you, Robert. Let me just share the screen and...
Well, and then...
Can you see that? Whoops, where'd it go? Come on, here it is. So it's just, it's this right here.
Okay, Susan?
Yes.
Are you ready?
I think so.
If you think so, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand.
Can you see me?
I can see, I can. Okay, and repeat after me. I, Susan?
I, Susan?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the Office of Library Trustee, Decatur Public Library and Library Trustee?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Decatur Public Library and Library Trustee according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, yes. Welcome to the board.
Welcome.
I thought I was taking the oath of office for president or something.
Yeah.
You got my vote.
And now it's recorded, so you can just, you know, share it with all your friends and family.
There you go.
So, we're gonna...
They have to watch the whole meeting, though, if they're gonna watch that part.
Right, right, yeah, you know, all that, all the, all the business. So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. So this is basically unless somebody has an issue or needs to change anything in the agenda or the approval of the minutes, we will actually just combine them into one. Does anybody have any comments about the minutes or the agenda? As far as any changes or modifications?
Nope.
Okay. Then I will take a motion, a motion to accept the agenda and the minutes as provided.
Still moved.
Any a second?
Second.
All right, and then I do have to do roll call. So, Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
And Sophia?
Yes.
And Samantha, yes. Okay, so that has passed. Rick, as of right now, do we have any public comments?
No.
And no written communications? Okay, we will move on to the City Librarians' report.
While I was in the middle of it, I got the order to go home, which is now, who knows? Because Public Health is telling me that that was overkill. But let me, I'm gonna pull up the, the numbers at least. And again, it's kind of like last month and the month before. I don't know really what the numbers tell us, because these are pretty extraordinary circumstances. But there are some that are kind of interesting. Here we go. Let me... Turn the right one. Okay. So can you guys see that all right?
Yes.
I'm having trouble seeing it, so let me see if I can... So, we were open just a few days, really, in June. And you can see that our total circulation was eh, maybe a little less than half of what it was last June. But a much higher proportion of that was electronic materials, which makes sense. So I'm, I'm kind of encouraged by those numbers, especially considering that the foot traffic wasn't really, really huge. Now, that first day that we were open, we had about 450 people. But it had, it did slow down considerably towards the end of June and early July. You can see we've got a lot of zeros and we're working on those, because there actually are some things that happened there. We just have to find out how the state wants us to count programs. So these interlibrary loan numbers, we didn't send anything out in June. We didn't receive anything in June. These are just renewals. So that's, those are, those are counted as a circulation, but those just represent renewals. But I think, you know, you look at a 52% increase in electronic circulating materials and a 35% in overall electronic content use. That's, that's pretty good. Visitors were 3,662 as compared to 20, almost 22,000 last, last June. But that's, again, you know, we were open every day and it was the height of summer reading. It also includes our summer reading kickoff, which brought in, you know, 7, 800 people in one day. New patron registrations are down quite a bit from last June. But overall, for the year, they're, they're very strong because of the ebook registrations. So, public sessions, 244, while sessions, 232, really, really low. But look at, where is it? The searches in our catalog, 95,000. That's a 70, 80% increase. I, I looked, I couldn't find anything even close to that in any month we've had so far since I've been here. Website got a lot of use, not, not crazy high, but very good. And you can see here, the Technical Services Department was not only back, they were doing yeoman's work. 2,200 items processed in the month of June. So I'm gonna let, you know, again, we've got the Division Heads and I'll let them talk in depth about their particular programs. But I thought there were some kind of encouraging things here. You know, especially considering just the few number of days. And we, you know, we weren't even open full hours a lot of those days. You know, we had some six-hour days, so...
Yeah, no, that's great. Does anybody have any questions on Rick's numbers? Okay, we will move on to Robert.
So again, so last month, Rick gave you the numbers for most of the, the circulation numbers that we did over the counter. The first day that we had the curbside, I think it's been reported, there were like 98 checkouts for the first day we had the curbside. The first day we, we were open, we checked out 139 items to about 26 people. But for the month of, month of June, you have the numbers for the people who came in, which were about 450. But 98, it looks like about nine, excuse me, nine, 98, 98 of those looks like were people who checked out, excuse me, 26 of those people who checked out. But for, for that week, but for the whole month, 985 people checked out items. And they checked out 7,975 items. So out of those people that came in, we have, that come into the library, we have a certain amount of people that will just check out and just check, just come in to check out something. So it keeps, it kept our staff pretty busy last, last month. And also, we had someone retire last month. Mary Takowski retired. So that was, that put a little bit more burden on the circulation staff to cover. But they did great work covering for the hours. We also had announcement from an admin, Joanne Sandberry, announced her retirement just this past month, last couple of weeks, I think, actually. So that's gonna be another loss to the library. We missed both of those guys a lot. And other than that, we just, mostly, we kept busy during the month. There was a lot of things to catch up on, getting back into the building. Everyone's back into the building working now. We don't have anyone working remotely unless it's, unless it's me. So it was just a busy month. And also, we had the, a lot of people working on the MyLibro. We were able to finish the training modules for that and get that over to PRS so they can start the marketing on that.
Is that, what was that, patron point, or?
MyLibro. MyLibro is the curbside app.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And it's, and it's got a lot more uses than that. But yeah, that's what we got it for, and it'll be, it'll smooth that out quite a bit.
Right, it actually allows you to search. And I think it's online now, right? MyLibro. But you can download the app anytime and it's set up to take you straight to the Decatur Public Library. And you can search through your searching, your requesting, and schedule your pickup all in one business.
And you can sync it with Alexa, so you can just ask it to search for you.
And it's called what, what again?
You can, you can sync it with Alexa, the voice-activated program, and, and so you can do...
It's called MyLibro.
Yep.
MyLibro?
Yep, and it's in the App Store.
Okay.
So we're all gonna go home and play with that. Or we're all...
We're all home.
We are home. Yes. All right, anything else? Any questions for Robert? Are you done? Or, like, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I think, yes, I think so.
Okay. All right, any questions for Robert from the board? All right, we'll move on to Becky.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Otherwise, I'd be closer. So basically, Local History has been doing the exact same thing we've been doing since the library closed for the month of June. But we have now surpassed 1,000 items on Omeka that got entered when we were gone. We're at 1,210. I finished the 1970s Board Minutes that are now on there and started Oral Histories, which is great, they're gonna take forever, but it's great. And the big announcement that we have is that the Local History Room will be opening to the public on January, or January, July 27th, which is a Monday. We will be open Monday through Friday, 10 to 2, at least for the first week. And most of the volunteers are coming back. I think I've only got about four of them that haven't, aren't able to return just yet. And one that will not be returning because she got a full-time job. So it's unfortunate, but if she ever finds time, she, you know, she's welcome back at any time.
Hey Becky, can you, can you explain for our new board members' benefit what Omeka is?
So Omeka is the online database where we store all of our digital, digitized items, which is photos, oral histories, board minutes. We have a city directory out there because it was falling apart so badly that we just decided to scan it and put it out there so people can use it. We've got all sorts of items out there. And you can get to it at omeka, O-M-E-K-A, dot decaturlibrary dot org.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, thanks Becky. Anybody have any questions for her? All right, Alyssa?
Yes, hello. PRS is almost entirely in the building. We only have one staff member who, it's not safe for her to return at this time, but she is working remotely. Samantha, you'll be very happy to hear she's working on Instagram.
Oh, I saw, I already saw it.
Of all the people who has to work at home, there's, she's so creatively gifted for videos and things like Instagram. Internal staff will be sharing as many pictures of videos as we can with her going forward. Something that's different that I would like to share, though, many of you, I'm sure, have heard that we have a social work intern currently. Her name is Jessica Hill. She goes by Jess. She is, she has her desk in the adult office and she reports to me, and that's why I would like to talk about her. She had to begin her internship working remotely, like the rest of us. And she got very, very busy. Rick provided her with all of our policies. She's been going through them for unconscious bias and anything that's a red flag that might help us to make Decatur Public Library more diverse, inclusive, and equitable. But she's been on site now, it feels like forever. And I'm gonna be so sorry to see her go. She's been a great member of the team. And she has started clinical hours and she has picked up two separate patrons that she's working with. With her, we're getting better opportunities for partnerships. Now, Homeward Bound is now coming on site to work with these people that she's established relationships with. And in particular, PRS is really working with her and also leadership, division heads. She wanted to do walkabouts outside the building, but also inside the building. And we wanted to make sure that she was safe and secure. And so we're providing a second. So I actually went on these walkabouts with her several times. Carol went with her yesterday, Becky went with her today. And what she is doing is establishing relationships with our regulars who happen to be patrons suffering from homelessness. And I hear today was a good day because our regular patron who used to sit in the lobby, he now sleeps outside the library. And we've been keeping our eye on him because it's been very hot and wanted to make sure that he had water and such. And today, he was actually waiting for you guys. He like sat up.
He did, he sat up for a minute.
I am so jealous I didn't get to be there because I've been waiting for that time when he finally accepts the fact that we care for him. So she's only here until August 28th. We're gonna miss her. But the big thing she's doing is writing the grant with her supervisor, Mary Garrison, who's a professor at Milliken. And with this grant, we will have a permanent social worker at the library. And it's not if, it's when.
I love it.
Will we get more interns or is this just a one-time deal?
Well, what we're trying to do, Sophia, is rather than have interns, have actually a, a permanent social worker. And that's what the grant, the, the grants...
Well, I, but will we still have interns as well with the permanent social worker?
Possible, it's possible. But, but the, but the, the overall goal is to get somebody, you know, the... It could be both, but it'll probably just be the, the part-time social worker. Permanent, but part-time.
We've had interns before, they're just usually library interns. And so, and generally, it requires the person who wants an internship coming to us and asking for it. So this was kind of a special case and something unusual.
Yeah. It's just kind of nice because it seems like she's picked up on things that other people haven't, just because she's coming from a different perspective.
Absolutely. But we hope that, you know, that, that a permanent social worker would kind of bring a similar perspective.
Same, same, yeah.
I'm on the board at Northeast Community Fund as well. And I mentioned this at a meeting that we had this week. And they were very, very interested in that idea that you have a social worker on board. So they'd like to somehow kind of collaborate, maybe do some talking back and forth. So I could arrange that if, if you guys are...
Please have them contact Alyssa and/or I, and we will get the ball rolling on that.
Okay, they just thought it was just a great idea.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, thank you.
Super.
All right, anything else for Alyssa? All right, Matt, it is your turn.
Hello, everybody. The good news is today, Illinois Century Network staff came in and got us connected back to their network. I've got some configuration changes to make tomorrow, but I plan on implementing it fully Monday morning. So it'll be much more reliable than Comcast. Comcast had an outage reported every day this week, so... Looking for an ICN. Our self-serve casing printing seems to be going okay. It's doing what it's supposed to do and going along just fine. Also, Chris starts full-time on Monday, so he'll be here in the evenings and weekends when we are open on Saturdays again for more support for the staff. And Chris and I answered about 89 help calls since our last board meeting, so...
And you had 115 running. You had 115 in June, I think. That was the biggest number I've seen in a long time. Hey Matt, how do we, how are we connecting to the ICN?
We go from our computer room out to the city, the Civic Center, and then from there, it goes out to Richland.
So it's on that, it's on the fiber optic network?
Right, right. And it'll be 150 megabytes up and down instead of 150 up and 20 down. If that means anything.
Means a lot to me.
It doesn't mean anything to me. But it sounds good.
It will be, because we've always had good luck with the Illinois Century Network. Over the years we have, we are down less than an hour totals, though.
That's amazing.
Big improvement. And that's about all I have.
All right. Any questions? All right, and Carol with the pub?
Yes, I had to get him on the screen because I actually took today off. So I'm, I'm not working from home, but I'm hanging out with this guy.
Well, thanks for being here.
There he is, there he is. Sorry. I just, I'm absolutely in love with his dog. But Rick kind of stole my story. And that's that we did do higher numbers and that's due to my fabulous staff. So I have one junior cataloguer that's still doing pretty much 100% at home. She's making two or three trips a week. She's fully set up at home, being very productive, doing both cataloging and a little bit of database work, but mostly cataloging. And then I have another employee who has young children and a husband who works 12-hour shifts. So she's kind of in and out and getting ready to set up to do more at-home work because she's really not sure what the school year is gonna bring. But she, her output has been amazing. And I've got, all my pages are full-time in the building. Julie is about 75, 80% in the building. I'm 100% in the building. And it's just been great to have everybody back and doing what we do. And since we are not a public-facing entity back there, we've been able to pretty much just reestablish our old routines and make a few tweaks and get her, get everything done. So it's been great.
Great. Questions for Carol?
And Division Heads, you guys are not required to stay for the entire meeting, but you're very welcome to.
I'll probably sign out.
Yes, go.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 Bye, guys. All right, so we did not have a PPPR committee this month. And we also did not have a finance committee because we had some people leave the board. So we figured we could keep everything kind of moving in this particular meeting. And then there's also no report from the foundation, correct, Rick?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, I can tell you roughly what the, the current count of the, their annual appeal is, and that's about $8,500.
Okay. Can you add me to the list of the foundation emails? I don't think, I don't know that there are any sent out, but...
Right now.
Okay. Hang on to the one. Okay, sorry. So then the Friends of the Library, they met last week and Rick went to that meeting.
Yeah, well, for the June, the June meetings...
Sorry.
That was a Zoom meeting.
So they didn't meet this month?
Well, they, well, they did, but, you know, typically in, in July, I report on June activities.
But we, but we did hear the Friends from last year, last, because we, this meeting was out.
Yeah, okay, well, and they met, they met, what, last Thursday? We, it was kind of a combination, Zoom and present only. Kind of, they went the opposite direction. Almost all of them were present and there, there were about three of them who attended by Zoom. And they approved a couple of things. One was, well, a few big decisions were made. One, there's gonna be no Library Day book sale. So that was, I think, the right decision, but a difficult one. It is their biggest moneymaker. They did approve a $200 expenditure for, oh my goodness. I think it was part of, our part of the scavenger hunt, but I'm not entirely sure that I remember that correctly. But the thing that interested me was the process that they approved. So we haven't had petty cash for a few years. This, we, we are part of the city's audit and they didn't like that, that the petty cash at the library where city staff don't work. So they eliminated, eliminated the petty cash. Now, at the same time, we got a library credit card. But that said, there's still restrictions on how we use that credit card. And I don't want to be just handing it to people, you know, for every little thing. A lot of times when there are programs that are approved, so let's say Bad Art Night. So the, the Friends Board approves it. Alex goes and buys a lot of materials out of her own pocket and then waits for reimbursement. Sometimes it's quick, sometimes it's not quick. But there are a couple larger ticket items that were coming up. And I just, I don't like staff having to, you know, dig into their pockets in advance for this kind of stuff. And that's not having petty cash, there's no real way around it. So I asked the Friends to consider a couple of solutions to that. And they didn't, they chose a completely different solution. They are buying, let's say they approve $200 for Bad Art Night. They buy a $200 gift card and give it to the programmer to go buy the materials. So that's the way they're gonna handle it. And I, you know, so it was a surprising choice to me, but it will, it will do the trick, which is keeping our guys from having to front money.
Yeah, okay. That's an interesting way of, of taking...
Yeah, and I still, you know, I, my dream is that someday that we'll go once a year and ask for a particular amount of money for the year. They'll approve that, and that, but they'll still leave us. Then, then the library will have to solve the problem of the staff reaching into their pockets. So it won't really help that. But I think it would be a nice thing for everybody. And, you know, we go back once a quarter. Instead of asking, or asking for money for a program, we report on, here's what we spent money that you gave us on. And, and I think that if, you know, if we're getting off track, they're not gonna give us as much money next year, you know? If they like what we're doing, they might give us more, so...
I kind of like that idea, too. That was one of the things that I wish they had done because I, when I was on that board, I was like, well, Rick has to approve everything anyway, so why don't you just come and report it to us, but...
I know, and, but...
They're, they're generous organization.
Very generous.
They have, they've given us a lot of help in the last, you know, especially, I, I can't remember the last time they even said, well, let's trim this. I mean, or let alone said no, it's been...
It was probably when I was there.
It's been, it's been a long time since, and, and since the outright said no to something, that's like four or five years ago.
Yeah, I was probably on the board.
I don't remember them ever saying no to anything when I was on it.
Yeah, from a couple of times.
I was on it for like four years.
Yeah, but I mean, one time they just sent, they kind of sent Mary Elmer back to the drawing board on something and she was planning something. It was, I don't know that they were used to it. It was an off-site program. And, you know, the pitch was, you know, probably not prepared at the time. And, and since they have approved several off-site programs, so...
Yeah.
Different way of thinking about things.
Okay, any other questions on that? So we'll go on to the IHLS. Um, so we'll go on to the IHLS, um, delivery reinstatement.
Samantha, Samantha, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How are the, but they are continuing to have, um, sales through the, no? So there's no income for, there's no income for the Friends?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are they taking books yet or not?
Yeah, they started a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, I think I remember you saying that at the last meeting that they were going to start that again.
Yep.
Yep.
I would definitely like to trim down some of my books.
They will take them. All right, Rick?
Okay, where, I'm sorry, where are we on the agenda?
IHLS.
Oh, yeah, uh, delivery was reinstated, I think, second week of July. We started taking, it was July first, uh, we started, you know, accepting hold requests from other libraries. Really interesting story. We've got our halftime clerk who, who pulls those holds. She's off, she's out on medical leave, uh, and so we had another full-time clerk kind of pinch-hit and do all of them. Now typically, you'll get, oh, forty, maybe fifty on a big day, uh, requests that you got to go pull. Day one, and, and here's how I found out about it. Before I tell you the number, here's, I, I had other directors emailing me saying, oh my God, how are you handling this? It's been crazy. And I'm like, well, Robert's, uh, Robert's on vacation and, and he would have told me if something bad was happening. So let me just go down there and check. And, and the, it was Lisa Towcars and she's, she's been here long enough that Susan, uh, worked with her, uh, at Decatur Public Library, and that's been a while. But Lisa was doing the polls and I found her and I said, what, uh, how are things going? And she said, oh, fine. And I said, uh, how are the polls? And she said, it's pretty busy. And I said, what's your number? Seven hundred. She was just, she said, you know, you just, you just work through it. It'll be fine. So I just told the fellow directors, I said, hire Lisa Towcars and you'll be fine.
That's a great story. I'll have to tell her. That's fantastic. All right, anything else on that?
It slowed down. It's, it's, it's slowed down.
I put in some requests. So, um, we'll move on to our old business. So just for Susan's sake, um, we did have, uh, we have reviewed, um, the drug-free workplace policy and the procedure for determining on the job, on the job intoxication. There are some little things, um, that we need to discuss before we actually need it. So we'll need a motion to discuss that a while, to discuss and accept the drug-free workplace policy and also the procedure for determining the on-the-job intoxication. Um, can we do those together, Rick? They need to be separate. You're on mute.
I, I, I think we were treating them as separate documents. But, I mean, if you want to combine them into one document, I don't, I don't have any quarrel with that.
Does anybody have any issue with that? I mean, they are the same, like, is related to the same thing. I mean, if you have one, well, like, I mean, I guess it would be different. You would have a policy for when something happens and a policy for before.
And typically, typically, I, I don't ask the board to approve procedures. Since this one has some fairly sensitive, uh, issues around it, I thought, I thought it wise. So typically, the procedures are just handled in-house. We don't come to you guys with that. But this one seemed to be a little more sensitive than most, so I, I, you know, and you don't even have to, you can just say, you know, it's fine, uh, but the policy is definitely something I want, I want you guys to be okay with.
Was there a policy before? Is it just an updated policy?
There was a brand-new policy. There's never even been a drug-free workplace policy that I can, that I can find. It's based on the policy from the City of Decatur with a few tweaks to sort of make it fit us better.
So, um, the main question that Rick had, because everything else seems fine. And it follows, you know, pretty much the city, but it's also library-specific in certain circumstances. Um, and there was a lot of language, from what I remember of the original, that had to do with driver, like, driving and, um, like, we don't have any drivers, so. So the, the main question here is the employees must notify their supervisor of any arrest, conviction, or relevant plea. So you can read that. Um, the question is whether we want it or not. And I think there was some concern, um, from the PPPR committee that, um, that might be a little bit too much personal information. But other than that, right?
My recollection is that.
Been a little while.
My, my recollection that Donna had some concern about that. She thought if there were a public safety issue involved, that it would be okay, like somebody driving. But, uh, uh, I also recall that Michael thought, hey, it's just something that'd probably be good to know. And if I had to pick one, I would pick Michael's. I, I think that it's, uh, you know, it's not like you got to act on it, but. And I can certainly live with either way. It's not, uh, it, it. You know, we don't have anybody driving anymore, so.
Well, the thing is, is are we planning to have anybody drive in the future or is this off the table? Like, that's where the question comes in, because you don't want to bring it back if somebody all of a sudden starts driving, but you don't want to have somebody driving and it not be there.
There is some, don't get me wrong. I mean, there's driving to meetings, to conferences and such. There's no, uh, there's no CDLs required or anything like that.
Well, and like, you, they, you know, if we do like delivery to nursing homes or something in the future.
I think it's just, I think it's safer to include it. Just because the risk of not, of not knowing it and having somebody driving is so huge. I, I mean, I started having flashbacks, sorry.
So, um, I will accept a motion to accept the policy as presented with a few, like, spacing. You know, like, I, that doesn't need to be in the motion, but, um, there was a couple of things that I had sent separately. There's just some spacing. Um, did.
I, I was editing that in a PDF and I'm not very adept at it, but I will give it to Matt and he will work his magic on it.
The important thing is what it says.
Right, yeah, and then, so in four-point-one, though, is that, is that a duplicate? So it says, failure of the drug test for all drugs will, other than cannabis, will result in the withdrawal of the job offer. And then it says, failure of the drug test for cannabis may result. So there's a difference between will and may?
That's intentional.
Okay.
Cannabis is legal.
Yes.
And I, and, uh, and the, the language is intended, I think, to give the employer the option of saying no.
Yeah, that's fine.
You don't have.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't like, that it was intentional, I guess, basically, so. All right, well, then I will accept a, a motion to, except unless, unless anybody has any other.
Well, we would, don't, we make the motion, then second, and then we have all this discussion, correct?
Right, yeah.
So I'm going to make the motion to accept it as presented?
Yep.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion, any further discussion? I know we went out of order, but it was more to get a clear motion. All right.
And what, what, what is the motion that we're, is accepting both of these or just?
Just the one, just the workplace policy. Yep, thanks for clarifying. Okay, so, um, I will do, um, like, one by one. So Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. Okay, that, um, policy is accepted as presented. And so we'll move on to the procedure for determining on-the-job intoxication. So I will take a motion for this one.
I will make the motion to accept this as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, the only thing I had was, um, removing all the on-call language, which I had told Rick about. Um, because we had taken it out of the drug-free workplace policy, so just to be clear. And then there's the substance spelling in two-point-one. And I think that's maybe a PDF issue.
And I'll, and I'll get those. And the, and the, the other thing, just to make the, the board aware, uh, those who were not on the committee, the other language that was removed was there, uh, there, there was language saying, another reason we contest is corroborated report. And my understanding is that the committee, uh, wanted that to, to be removed. Again, if it were a public safety issue, it would have accepted that. Do I, do I recall that correctly, those who were on the committee?
Where is that? I don't remember.
I removed it. It was.
They took it out.
Okay, then that's fine, yeah. Did anybody have any issue with that? Okay, then, uh, so can I have, well, then we can, do I need, I'm sorry. I'm sort of still new at this, so. Do I get, with my changes, do we need an amended motion? Okay.
Right, I can make, I'll make an amended motion with, um, the changes that Samantha requested.
Okay. Second, I need a second.
I'll second.
All right. Um, all in favor? Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. Okay, we'll move on. And so we're going to move on to new business. And so we've got, the first one is a DEI, so diversity, equity, inclusion.
We've, uh, the, it's been hard for the committee to meet. We have outside stakeholders on the committee also. It's not just library employees and, and boards. But Robert did manage to broker a, a Zoom meeting that, uh, everybody could attend recently. And I'll let him tell you a little more about that, but I also know that he's, he's working with the City of Decatur to see how they're approaching this issue and, uh, uh, vetting some, uh, potential consultants on the issue. So Robert, can you, uh, add anything to that?
Sure, um, this is, uh, this is a topic that I'm, I'm very passionate about. I, I have had the opportunity to talk with John, the Assistant City Manager. And he had some, we had a really good conversation. He had some good ideas. And he did, um, mention to me, you know, French Wilson was one actually that I could talk to. And Rochelle, I can't think of Rochelle's last name.
Right, Robert, can you, can you tell the board who French is?
I'm sorry.
Can you tell them who French is?
Yeah, French is the, uh, she's the HR. Uh, I think she's also a city assistant manager, but she's over HR portion of this city. So she's been there, uh, before. She worked at the city before at HR. They hired her back a couple of years, uh, a couple of years ago now. So anyway, uh, French and I had a Zoom meeting. We had, had some conversations and she wasn't able to make the meeting this morning. But it's, uh, they have some similar interests or similar questions we have. And they don't have a, a diversity committee lined up over there. They have a human rights group. And the person who, I think the chair, his chair, I talked with him yesterday, Marty Watkins, talked with him. And they also have a civil service group. And those are pretty much the people who work with, you know, with the hiring and give the, uh, the recommendations, uh, for hiring and for personnel. So right now I'm looking at having another meeting. Our meeting, uh, that we had before, uh, I think a couple of weeks ago, it went very well. We had a couple of people that are not of the library, not in the library. They attended the meeting. We talked about the charter. We talked about some of the other things that, you know, problems and situations that we have at the library. Uh, and out of that meeting, actually, we had a good conversation with a couple of staff members here. They were both had heart-to-heart and said, you know, I didn't know you felt this way. And, you know, they, they both understood each other a little bit better after the meeting. So that was, to me, that was plus worth the whole meeting, you know, there within itself. What we're looking at next is like to get together at least, um, once more this month, uh, if possible. And we also like to find out what our scope is going to be for this project, you know? Uh, right now, we're looking at just the, um, the charter, which Rick had mentioned to us. And that's to increase in diversity on the board, maybe in the staff. We're looking at some of our hiring practices, how we're going to do that. So, you know, there's a lot going on right now. There's a lot going on in our world and our, you know, and about with diversity and culture. But we can't cover, you know, all of it. But so we, one of the things I noticed in my, um, in my, um, research is that I've, Evanston Public Library, and I can send this to you guys. They hired a company called Deeta Jones and Associates. And they worked with them and they have a, to me, it's a terrific statement out there and I can send you a report. But at the end, they actually came up with like ten points that the library should do to help their diversity, inclusion, and equity. Uh, you know, things like, uh, just basically issuing a statement that this is where we stand and investing in cultural competence, you know, and working with that business case as well as that moral case, how it's actually beneficial to be more diverse. So that's, to me, that's a good outcome to have that statement. And so something that we could present to the board, present, you know, to the director and the board. So we're, we got a ways to go before we get there. We have, you know, still need some more, um, members to join. So we've been working with different community people. I don't know if we want to call them leaders. A lot of people are kind of reluctant to say their community leader is, yeah, you know, I want to be involved. But, um, so that's kind of where we're at right now. We're still working on it. And I'm, I'm really, I don't feel like we're, uh, behind at all. I think this is going to be a slow process. I want it to be a very, uh, good process and a profitable process. And I'd like for it just not to be, you know, smoke, puff of smoke, and then it's gone. Something at the end of the day, when we're done, we can say we actually achieved something. You know, we can look back and say, that's what our group, uh, was able to, um, bring out of this. So, uh, I'm excited to be working with this group and everyone that I've talked with is excited, you know? Now, we just get so many, everyone's, um, kind of into it and they're sending all kind of, hey, did you see this diversity training? Did you see this diversity training? So, you know, you're like, we can't, we can't do them all, but, you know, it's good to have people engaging.
Hey, Robert, do you have a board member on that committee?
No, I think the only one that we were looking to be on that committee was the president and you.
I can do it.
Anyone, we don't take anybody.
I'll do it, Robert.
Okay, that's, that's fine, yeah. Great. I'll send you what, you know, we've worked, we've been working with. So you can kind of, you know, get up to speed. Uh, so a lot of its information. And I, one of the links that I sent out recently was, uh, uh, it was a Zoom meeting last week. And it was about tackling racism in classical children's literature. And it was, uh, last Thursday. And it was attended by five hundred members, five hundred people. They were like, they were excited about it. You had teachers, you had librarians. And they were tackling, you know, some of the old classical liter, literature. And I can send some of those resources out to you guys, too. But, you know, things that we don't think of, you know, I hadn't thought of, like the Five Chinese Brothers, you know? That's one of the books that, and they said, well, you know, it's problematic now. But I do like, at the end of the Zoom meeting, the libraries did say, librarians did say, you know, we don't censor. However, what we're trying to do is offer more, uh, more resources. You know, putting more resources out there and saying, hey, look at this, look at this, look at this. So it was a very good Zoom meeting. Uh, you know, it was like, I have some of these slides. And I'd be, you know, glad to share it with you, but, um, it's, it's, so far it's been a positive, a very positive experience.
Yeah, and you can tell, actually. I mean, you can tell around the building, I think. And it's nice to see folks. And it's nice to see folks getting together and being, talking about these issues. And, and to sort of piggyback on what Robert said about the literature. You know, you're going to find that in, in, in older literature. And we don't censor, but we, but we want to add context. You know, we want to help people put it in, in a bigger context and in a modern context. Doesn't mean we get rid of it, but it means that we, we talk, we, we find ways to talk about it.
Right.
I've also, I reached out to the mayor about, because we still, still need some board members. So I asked her specifically about that, about having more diverse board. And she's, she said she's working on it. And I also reached out to somebody I went to high school with, because he has, it's Terrence Tatt Taylor. He has a big following on Facebook. And so we had a long discussion about, you know, about our city and about the library and what we can do for the community. And then also, you know, he, because I said, we need more participation, like what? And so, I mean, and we, we just, we need some help on, you know, ideas on who might be good or, you know. And so we've, we've been throwing our ideas around. And so I just need to reach back out to him.
Another person that you might consult with is Bruce Nims. This Bruce does a class, a board class, and he has a, he has a whole list. In fact, I have it because he just sent it to me. So I think there's a lot, there's some.
We'll get it too. If I don't already have it on my desk somewhere, we'll get it too. He sends it out every year. And, you know, it's, it's a list of graduates from his class and what their interests are too. So that's helpful too. And I, Robert, you said, and I'm sorry, I forget his last name, but Carl was interested in being on your, on your committee. Carl, what is his last name?
Carl Coleman and also Marty.
I think Carl Coleman would make an excellent trustee. He's, you know, he's in his twenties. He's, he works for, does he still work for Senator Menard?
I'm not sure. I know he's, I think he's running for the county board.
Yeah, and he's, and he's grown up in the library, you know. So, you know, somebody to consider. We think, we thank the world of Carl.
They're super patrons.
Yeah, super patrons. On the board.
What, Sophia?
Somebody young, younger than you, Samantha, you're the youngest.
I know, I'm young.
Yeah, and here's.
You're the baby.
I know, but I'm not that young.
That cohort of millennials and diversity, we've always said, you got to think of it broadly. I mean, and generational diversity is, is important too. And that cohort, that millennial cohort is the biggest user of public libraries. They are the biggest, mostly because they got, you know, they've got kids, you know. But, but they are the biggest user of public libraries. So nice to have a couple, you may technically be a millennial, Samantha, I'm not sure, but. Yeah, nice to, it'd be nice to have a couple at least.
Natalie, I mean, I know, like Natalie on the friends board is. She's the youngest now.
By far, by far.
Younger than me.
Yeah, I think there's about 30 years between her and the next youngest, maybe more.
Yeah, I mean, and I was that person too, until she got on the board. So is there any, does anybody else have anything else they want to talk about? Because this is definitely something I'm passionate about. And so we're just trying to keep the conversation going.
And we're, we're having the same, we're having the same discussions in the Illinois Library Association. It's the same thing is going on. American Library Association as well, but I'm not involved on that, at that level very much. So, but ILA is having some, you know, some challenging conversations right now on the board. But it's time.
Yep, it is. All right, well, we will now move to the personnel update. We already heard about some of them, so.
Yeah, you, you heard about a lot of, so Mary Luskowski retired June 30th. Joanne has announced her retirement. She has asked me to keep the date quiet. She's been here, she's been here since, you know, I always, this just helps me kind of get a grant. She started in the Ford administration, so she's been here. She's a longtime administrative assistant. It's not the only job she's done at the library, but, you know, I always say, I couldn't get through my best day without her. So we're about to find out.
Is it really soon? Like, do I need to go to the library?
Not super soon. It's gonna, it's gonna seem that way to Robert and I. We're probably, we're probably going to go with, in the next couple of weeks, get a temp in there to, to get some training on some of the basic stuff that she does. And we may go an entirely different direction. When Katie Gross retired, people said, how are you going to replace her? I said, I'm not going to try. And, and it's going to be kind of the same thing with Joanne. And I, I may go with more of a, an executive secretary. Joanne's more of the administrative aide slash office manager. And we'll see how we can take some of those duties and look at more of an executive secretary approach. And I think that'll, I think that'll smooth a lot of things over. So we're also doing some hiring. And, and this will be apropos to the financial discussion as well. As of July 6th, Tabitha Bilyeu, who's been a part-time librarian and just a game changer, fantastic. Doing great work on, she's our web mistress. She's doing great work there, really good at the social media stuff. Good numbers person and just a doer. She's, she's, if you go back to the adult office, you see that it looks like an art explosion. And then she's got her very organized, clean. So, and she's, she's what we need. And she's, you know, to balance, it's, we need them both. But, so she is now full-time. She does not want benefits. She, you know, she has health insurance and that makes it a lot more affordable. We also, Chris Nyheiser, who's been Matt's assistant for, I don't know, six months or so, part-time. Made him full-time. He just got his degree in computer science. He's taken such a load off of Matt, who is the most overworked guy in the building. Never complains, well, he complains all the time, but it's different. He doesn't complain about how much work he's got. And, you know, it took me years to figure out, I'm dumping way too much on this guy. And because I don't really understand all of what he does. And as I began to understand a little bit, I saw this is, this is the most overworked guy in the building. So Chris has been, and it's great for the staff, because Matt comes in early in the morning. You know, he comes in like 5:30 to get his behind-the-scenes stuff done without help calls coming in. But he leaves in the middle of the afternoon. And that leaves several hours where we don't have an IT person on it. So Chris has been spotting that, and now he's going to do it on a full-time basis. And it's, it's been great for the staff and he's been super great to work with. We've also got, we've also got, I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted because there's, now there's things going on in my home. So Amanda Young was promoted from library halftime, or no, excuse me, full-time library assistant to full-time librarian earlier this year. And we finally backfilled that position with, with two, two part-time staff is, is what we're going to do. Hired, from what I hear, they'll start early August, but a couple of pretty amazing candidates. So that's where we are right now. And my projection, when we get to that, doesn't include Joanne's retirement. So, because I'm not sure, and that will have an effect on my financial projection, but I haven't worked that in yet.
Okay. So, any questions? All right. So we'll move on to the June 2020 check register. So you pull it up for me.
And unfortunately, we did not have a meeting, so I would like to ask a few questions. Do I need to make a motion first before we, before I ask questions? How does that work?
We usually don't, I mean.
I think you can. No, I think you just ask your questions.
We usually just ask the questions in our regular meeting, so.
Yeah, and then if we have any discussion after we've made, after, then you discuss then.
Okay, Rick, so the, the overdrive, the $10,000 at, with current use, how long will that last us?
It's to the left.
Check register's over there, to the left, sorry. I'm pointing at it, you can't see me. Like, it's right there.
Okay, I, I don't have an answer to that. I would have to go back and look. I think it's typically about two to three times a year we, we re-up that. But don't hold me to this, I will have to double-check to be sure.
Okay, and then just a few lines down, the EBSCO Industries database package.
Yeah.
I did notice in this morning's newsletter, such great marketing, it was super. Does this database package include some of the things that we're trying to do a better job on promoting?
It's not a database package, so, and that's, I'm sorry, this is, this is, you know, what's, it gets put in, so it gets kicked out. But it's, this is not a database package, per se. What this is, is this will, this is that, that piece that's going to allow us to search across all platforms in one fell swoop. We're working on that, the training in that right now. And I don't have a live date, but it should be soon.
Okay, then you'll keep us up to date on that?
There'll be one place that you go on the website and it will search across all, not just the books we have, but all of our ebook holdings and our databases, everything in one fell swoop.
It'll be, it'll be fantastic, so, okay. Just out of curiosity, you bought a lot of Rubbermaid cubes?
Yep. So those were, as we, I, I think I told you guys last time that we had 14,000 items checked out the day we closed.
Oh, yeah.
And we had 11,000 whenever we last met, I think, still checked out. Well, things started coming in really fast. We have to quarantine them. There was no place for them to go. So these are those, those big tubs with, great big tubs with, with wheels. So when you go to the book drop, that's where, that's where they go. But our, our, what do we have, two or three, Robert?
I think Robert's showing them to us right now.
Yeah, yeah, great. Okay, super. And we're getting the stuff back, so that's great. I assume that our FOIA volume has fallen way down. Are we just catching up with past work on that for the lawyers or is there some other issue?
Well, a little bit, a little bit of that, but it's also a little bit of, we had a ton of new labor laws come down the pike. A lot of new things were, were happening. So some of it's that. You're going to see, I don't think, I miss Chris, let me just tell you. I miss him, I don't think we've talked in a month. Called him just to see how he was, but you're going to.
I'll charge you for it.
But it's, it's going to get a lot better. It's, it's, some of that is, you know, the, the old stuff, but, but most of it, I think, is just the, the, all the new legislation that was coming down the pike.
Okay, and then my last question, I know you're doing a lot of, you used this opportunity to do a lot of training. So you've got $3,000 on that line for thick stat?
Yeah, and that's not really a training either. So I've got to get that changed. That, what that is, is the MyLibro app that Robert was talking about.
Okay. Okay.
Which is, and once you see that app, and you're going to, you're going to be, your mind's going to be blown that we got that for three grand. I mean, it's, it's really cool.
I can't wait.
I just downloaded it so I'd remember what the name was.
Yes, I did too. I haven't put my library card in yet, so. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you, Rick.
And I've probably missed this throughout. Do we pay, do we pay Jones and Thomas $400 a month?
Yeah, they, they now host our website. So we were able to, we were able to repurpose some servers and some other things. But yeah, we're paying them $400 a month for hosting and also get X number of hours of editing and that kind of stuff without charge.
Okay, I, I must have missed that in the past.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we approve the check register as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? And we have to do roll call. So Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Samantha, yes. All right, that is passed. And so the 2020 budget review and production.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share a screen again if you guys would like. Or, yeah, I, I think I want to at least for a bit, just for the purpose of, you know, the recording. Let me go to it.
Do we have the first distribution yet or any estimate of when it's coming?
As of, as of the last time I checked, which was on the 8th, we did not have it. And I, you know, the last time I talked to Greg about it was the last time we talked in here about it. And it was saying late July or August was what he was hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any, any questions about this budget report? I mean, I could talk about specifics. I, I can tell you that we're in good shape and without, I'm going to go right to this, because this is, this is our cash position after, you know, this is, we're, oh, that's not even, that's not even up to date. Because our, actually, our cash position, 7-1, is more about half a million. Sorry, I may have named the wrong one, because that is not right.
Yeah, and you, you've got May up here.
Yeah, yeah.
It says May.
And I don't have access to the right one at home, I'm sorry. But it's, where, where we're at now, our cash position is a half a million. So that's, we, we used to run out of money in March, completely out of money. So the city met payroll for us and paid all our bills for us and in front of us until we got our first distribution. And here it is, you know, mid-July, and we still have half a million dollars in the bank. So, and we haven't gotten our distribution, which we usually get in June.
Most of our biggest expenditures, like the, the market, like Patreon Point and EBSCO, like, I mean, I, I see some of those things are already paid for, but are most of like those big projects taken care of? Like, have they been accounted for already, like?
All payroll. They're all going forward.
Or muted or something.
That's where, that's where the, the projection comes in. You know, so that's where I take that stuff into account.
Right.
So I can, I can go to that and hope, goodness, that I sent you the right one on that, because all I have is what I sent you. Let me see, yes, this is the correct one. So that would be, those, those bigger things that you're talking about mostly are under software. So this is, my projection for, for software is that we're probably going to go a little over. Now, some of those, I got a call from John Kinsit, who's the Assistant City Manager, the other day. And he's working on the Cures Grant that was just approved by the state. It's federal monies and it's for governmental, local governmental organizations. So we're kind of going back and rethinking some of our expenditures of, since March, and looking and seeing how many of them were directly COVID-related and can be put on this grant and reimbursed. But right now, we are over budget, because there are lots of software that we did not budget, that we had to quickly move to. And we're not over budget overall. I mean, fungibility allows us to do this, our bottom line is fine. But in that, in that line, we are definitely running over. So the other things that are, I, I think state replacement tax is probably going to come in lower than I had thought, because our last distribution was pretty paltry. And that's to be expected. And we have, but I still don't know. And, and, you know, Mr. Zentara seemed to be pretty optimistic about. And we have, but I still don't know, and, and, you know, Mr. Zentara has seemed to be pretty optimistic about the property taxes, so I'm going with that. We're gonna collect what, what we, what we're levying for. And given those, given those numbers, what we're look, what I'm projecting is a $23,000 surplus overall. Now, that's a lot different from what I projected last month, and that's because of, you know, we've added, we've added some staff. Here's my main thinking about, about that adding of staff. This is a, this is a budget line that comes in way under every year, personnel, because of, because of turnover and various other things. Here's what I'm doing, I've been doing these last few years. I'm paying division heads a much higher salary to cover frontline work, because I'm not, we don't have enough frontline people. And taking them from the work that they, that they should be doing. As I, as I turned that into a spreadsheet and really examined it, I think I needed to get more, I need to get more frontline people. And since we always seem to end up under budget, not seem, we always end up under budget on personnel, I thought this was the time to do it. So it still leaves us in a good position. It's just not a $150,000 good position.
Sure.
Well, I hope as you hire new people that you're gonna continue with the idea of job sharing and flexibility and people covering many, having many skills so that you've got internal flexibility as the situation needs it.
Absolutely, and as we, as we look at, and especially there, there are three job classifications that, you know, I hope to blend by 2024. That's our, that's our date, because 2024 is when the, is when the, excuse me, when the minimum wage increase has an impact on us. It doesn't affect us at all until then. But then I want to take those positions that will be affected by it and blend them all into one position, and we'll need fewer of them. You know, we're gonna, you know, we're already at 50% self-checks, so, and, and, you know, we're seeing some decline in physical book circulation. So we can take those positions and, and blend them all into one, the clerical page, you know, different levels of clerks into pages and turn it into one job.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I just have a question. What bank do you, do we use?
I believe it's Bucy, but the books are down the street.
Okay.
But I believe, you know, in the deposits we make, I believe it is Bucy. A couple of different accounts?
Yeah.
It's Bucy.
Okay, so we can move on to the next policy, which we're just gonna take a look at. And if anybody has any questions, I, we're, I will request a motion to table it probably, like, once that's, I believe that's what we were planning on doing. So anybody have any comments on this? I mean, because we're, we just, you just found this.
The lost and found, you mean?
The lost and found, yeah, sorry.
See, it hasn't been reviewed since 1998. And, you know, I-
Do we?
I, I just wanted to put it in front of you guys to do a first reading and we can, we can work through it. I don't expect any action really on it today. I put it as an action item just in case. But-
Do we have it Form 280?
Probably some, we could probably find Form, Form 280 somewhere.
And who fills it out? Patron, or, I mean, who's finding this, these lost items? How many lost items do we get?
No, mostly I fill it out, I fill out lost and found. We have a clerk that's over lost and found, and she keeps it, and she's aware of this policy. And first of valuables, like it says in the policy, we take them up to admin. The only thing that, the one thing that we haven't done as frequent is to give, like, certain things to the, the Kedda Police Department. We haven't done that. I think usually we'll, we'll hold on to it eventually, even if it's after 30 days, they may show up and get it. So we've held on for longer than 30 days for some of those things.
Yeah, that seems short to me, especially valuable item.
And it doesn't, I mean, like, how much space, is there a lot of lost and found stuff?
Not really. We have, the majority of the lost and found items are like keys, which, go figure, and phones, cell phones. You know, a lot of car keys, we have a lot of car keys and cell phones, so.
Yeah, fire burners.
Yeah. Clothing, we have clothing, we have a lot of clothing, hats.
Do we have a policy with the clothing that we hold on to it for a certain period and then just donate it?
Said 30 days.
Oh, okay.
Everything's like 30 days.
I mean, do we wanna request that it's maybe longer than that? I mean, 60 to 90, or?
I mean, at this, at this point, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a burden to us, like, space-wise or anything like that. And I think we could, I, I think we could do longer. Do you agree with that, Robert?
I, I think we could for some items, but clothing, I mean, depending on the-
You should for clothing especially.
Yeah, clothing, yeah, some of it's, it's been well-loved, I guess, or well-used, everybody wants it used. So we, you know, it's in a bag, we have to put it in a bag, some of it, and it's sitting somewhere, and so we're kind of waiting on that, that 30 days to be up, so we can do something with that and get it out.
So the more valuable things, you know, the first four items, basically, I, I mean, I would say longer, so. I don't, um, you know.
Car keys doesn't come back to get them. How do you, how do you get home?
I don't know.
I know, that's crazy.
Well, if you ride the bus, you know, like-
Why do you have your car keys in your pocket?
Well, I mean, maybe your house keys.
Someone left their leg here. How do you leave your leg? How do you leave your crutches? You know, you leave, they left, how do you leave your crutches up?
Well, this is for something, are you gonna do anything with this, Rick, and bring it back to us? We're gonna talk about it?
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted you guys to hear the first reading and hear what your, hear what your thoughts and suggestions were, and I can incorporate a few of them and bring it back next month. And what I'm hearing is that the first four items probably longer than 30 days.
That's what I think.
Yeah, I agree.
Books and magazines, I would say, are, yeah, that's fine, because it's a library. Like, I don't know how you're gonna, I, I don't know.
We might wanna define valuable and lesser value.
It, I mean, it says valuable items such as watches, rings, and computer items, but we'll need to add phones, of course.
Keys, I think keys, I mean, you might wanna keep, I don't know.
Yeah, I would say key, keys are number four.
Okay.
Specifically, and it says, for the purposes of this policy, items of lesser value are clothing, notebooks, and footwear. So I don't know if there are any other-
I just think that's way too specific. I, I, by, by defining, I mean, like, put a, put a dollar value on it. I mean, how can you think of all the things that could be lost? I mean, it's a scarf, it's not, I, I don't know, it's just, I, I, I think that, you know, if you, if you look at it from a, a dollar value perspective, it might be easier, but and I know that's not always easy to determine either, but-
I mean, and, and/or we could put example, like, make it an example, like, instead of saying include, like, example items such as watches, rings.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
Jewelry, like, make it more generic, I guess.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm putting some notes on here, so.
Because I thought the same thing. I was like, what's a valuable item? And then I was like, oh, there's-
Well.
Star at the bottom. Describing what it is, so. The money feels strange, like, I mean, but, I mean, if it's 60, 90, or, you know, if it's more days, then I'm okay with that. Like, 30 days feel short to just donate it.
For the clothing, you mean?
No, for the money, the first one. And then do we, would we really give it, do they have auctions at the, I don't know.
I'm sure they do. Maybe not, maybe not our police department, but it's, they, they might get together to, but, I mean, they, I mean, they've, they've come and accepted these things.
Yeah, they have in the past. The police department has had auctions in the past.
Sure, there's auctions.
Yeah, and we don't need to put the, the language, giving it to the police for this, we could just say we're turning it over, we, at this point, that's when we give it to the police.
That's a good, yeah, that's a good idea.
I just feel like there's only a certain amount of time that we should be holding on to this stuff. I mean, people need, if they don't realize they've lost it, you know, I don't know. I mean, the only case scenario I can think of that we'd wanna hold on is, is that the person ended up, like, in the hospital and then 30 days later came out.
How do we know that?
I know, but I mean, that's the only case scenario where I can think that somebody wouldn't come back and get it.
I know, I get that, but, you know, sometimes you're looking for stuff, I mean, I am a, a misplacer, and then I go, oh, I didn't think about the library. You know what I mean? I don't know, I don't know.
I feel like we should be responsible for stuff for too long, especially valuable items. I just don't feel like that's, I just think it's too, too, too much responsibility. I don't know, maybe I'm completely wrong. I like the 30 days and done.
So 30 days and it'd be given, you know, to the police, or, I mean-
Well, depending on what the item is, I mean, if it's like clothing or something like that, donated or thrown away, depending on how well-loved it is. And as far as the value, valuable item, yeah, given to the police department, and they can figure out what they wanna do with it.
So just 30 days, because I, like, I don't really necessarily like the language either in the three, number three, like, I would prefer probably to let the, the police take care of it too. If, if they do that, I mean, like, I'm assuming they do, so, like, I would, you know, donating a purse and taking the money out of it, it feels super weird. And how do you not have your library card in?
I would think we make, you know, one attempt to reach out to the people, and if not, we'd give it to the, give it to the authorities, I-
I would say give the money to the authorities as well. Give everything, the purse, wallet, the money.
Yeah, we, yeah, I would agree with that, too.
I mean, I like the idea of us trying to contact them, but at some point, people need to take responsibility and either show up, or we give it to the police and they can just deal with it. They're, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think making up, I'm like Michael, I'm a misplacer thing, and, and Robert probably remembers this, that, you know, I, I was on a walk one time and my, walking my dogs, my wallet fell out of my pocket, and, you know, the guy was a detective, and he finally got ahold of the library and said, you know, tell him to call this number, and wow, I mean, kind of amazing. And, you know, so I certainly appreciated that effort in that, in that attempt, but I think once we make that.
I think 30 days is plenty.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think it gives the person an opportunity to figure out where their stuff is, and then at that point, we can give it to the authorities for the valuable stuff, and we can dispose of it as, as of, for the, yeah, the lesser, you know, clothing or whatever. Just make them items more generic.
Clothing, books, like, the books go to the friends, I think that's fine.
So let me, let me kind of, kind of combine some of those items and, and come back to you guys next month with a, a recommended policy, based on, based on what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to table.
I make a motion to table it.
Second.
All right, Michael?
Yes, yes.
No, I didn't, I-
Yeah.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Amanda, yes. Okay, so we'll move on to the security camera policy. This is, this will be for sure, this will be tabled until next, but we wanted to at least show it to you, same, similar to the thing, the lost and found, because there are a couple of spots where Rick wanted to confirm with Matt, so.
Confirm with Matt and also confirm with our, our application to dispose of local records and make sure that it's in line with it. I believe it is. But I wanna double check that first and then just see, you know, let you guys kind of sit with the, there's actually a lot in there. And let you guys sit with it and see if you're okay with the language. I don't, aside from that, I don't have any, any issues with it. We might wanna put some language in there. And I'm just throwing it out there, I don't think we have to, but we got a new camera system, not whole system, but some new cameras recently, well, within the last year. We didn't know that the default setting also recorded sound.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Yeah, you can't do that. So we may wanna, I don't know whether we, since it's the law, maybe we don't need to say anything about it, but once we discovered it, we turned it off, but it was recording sound also. So-
I have a technical question. So given our new system, is this a, is this a storage issue? I mean, how much of the stuff that we regularly tape for 30 days, how much of our storage does that use?
Yeah, and that, and that's what I've got, that's what I'm gonna talk with Matt about and make sure that those two sections that I highlighted jive with what it actually does, but it is a storage issue. I believe it's a 30-day, it's a 30-day loop, you know, it, it holds it for 30 days and then overwrites. And I also believe that that's what our application for disposal of local records says is okay. We have to do that one every year, send it in, say, you know, our, you know, we wanna get rid of it every 30 days, and they allow us to do that, rather than send them one every day. I mean, that's the only other option, because every day, something's being overwritten. The exception in that policy is if we pull something out and put it on a hard disk because of an event that happened. So there are, that policy does allow for that. Now, I, I, the other thing to just be aware of, and I, I think it's okay, but, so it says, oh, at about the fifth bullet point, it says access is also allowed by law enforcement upon request or when pursuant to a subpoena, court order, or when otherwise required by law. This stuff is subject to FOIA.
I don't know.
So I don't know whether that's otherwise required by law.
I guess.
Well, I've got you on speaker. Sorry, Sophia got cut off, so I've got her on speaker.
Okay, I, I don't see her.
Yeah, she, she got kicked off.
Trying to get back in, but it won't let me.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for her. Soon as you show up, I'll let her back in. So anyway, that, those, that-
You got that game?
FOIA, I just don't know what we're, we should put that in the language or not.
I'll keep it until you come on.
Is that a question for Chris? Is that a Chris question?
Could be. I mean, I, I can run it by him.
Since he has, since he's our FOIA expert times 10.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know it's subject, I know it's subject to FOIA, we've, we've, we, we've, we've given, we've turned over several hours of footage.
What's your question, then, Rick?
My question is whether we have to put that in the policy. That bullet point I pointed out to you says access allowed by law enforcement officials upon request, or when pursuant to a subpoena order, or when otherwise- Is that, here, there she is, I'm gonna let her in there. Is that-
She's letting you in. Okay.
Okay.
Bye.
Do we have to specifically say that it's subject to FOIA?
Oh, I see. Okay, so it is whether we say it or not, that's just a wording question.
Yeah.
Okay. What we say doesn't make any impact on, on its FOIA standard. What we say doesn't make any impact on, on, it's FOIA standard.
It is subject to FOIA, we know that, we've, we've, we've learned many things about FOIA in the last year and a half, so.
Yeah, so my comments, as far as, like, in the second paragraph, that first sentence is like pretty long. So I just feel like you could probably just put a period in there and then security cameras assist library staff in probably more addressing than preventing. I don't know how many things are actually prevented by security cameras.
I think, I think knowledge of the, the security cameras there can, can definitely have an impact on theft.
Yeah.
Whether we have to say that in the statement or not is debatable.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just wondering, like, yeah, knowing that, like, could, it doesn't assist library staff though.
Yeah, I don't know what that means, assist library staff in preventing the occurrence of any violations.
Because I know, I know what it's saying, but we don't have like a security staff watching this, like checking on, you know, the patrons typically, it's usually kind of after the fact. It could, it could be, but
My opinion of that whole introductory portion, I think, is that it's boilerplate language that can probably be done away with. I mean, a lot of times policies will start off with this flourish and it doesn't serve any real purpose. And if you, if I'm, I'm okay with, with getting rid of it, I mean
Yeah, I mean, like, just the, even starting at the purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines for the placement. Like, I don't know that we need anything else, because the rest of this stuff is all either part of, you know, like, what you said, it's kind of flowery language, or it's like already in the policy, like somewhere else, like the provide law enforcement assistance.
Yeah, I agree.
Does anybody feel okay about that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I, I can't find it, but I feel like there was something about staff in here, is that right? Like, it said something, I was looking for it and I couldn't find it, like about staff being recorded? Or am I misreading? Oh, it will not be installed for the purpose of monitoring staff performance. So, I mean, that is true, right? Or is it not true? I mean, because I know
That's true, I don't think we've ever said, let's look at, let's look at the security camera and see if John is, is, is working hard. And we don't really have them in those areas. I do like them where there's money handled, I mean, I think that's a, that protects the staff, honestly.
Oh, yeah. No, that's, that's fine, I was just, I was just double checking that. And then I, the last bullet point, it says the protection of library properties of secondary importance. I don't think we even need that sentence, like, it just says, if it just said staff and patron safety is our, is the first priority, period. Because I mean, like, yeah, yes, properties, you know, like, I don't know that you need to
I think it's in the wrong policy, I think the whole bullet point's in the wrong policy, not through the security cameras. I, I'd be, I would advocate to eliminate that whole bullet point, but
Yeah, I don't think it, yeah, now that you say that, I don't think it's needed. That was all I had, and I thought everything else looked fine. You know, other than what we kind of discussed, so. And does anybody have anything else on that? All right, then I will take a motion to table that as well and Rick will bring something back for us.
Moved.
All right. Second, I need a second.
One second.
All right, Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sophia? Did you hear me?
I heard, Sophia.
I'm on mute, yes.
All right, and Samantha, yes, okay, that has been tabled. And then board openings, we kind of, like, this will be super short. I, I talked to Amanda Pippett, she said she was too busy. Julie said that she, the mayor said that she has a couple people in mind. She said Stacy Young has actually, hasn't submitted her application, but that was a while ago, so I don't know if she's still interested. And I can give you a glare outside the door. And Amanda said, Amanda Pippett said no, that she was too busy and so, and then there was somebody else that Julie was reaching out to, who is a lawyer apparently, so.
I, I, I'd like to reach out to Carl Coleman and, and see if he's
Yep.
Because I, I'm, I'm very impressed with that, I mean
Yep.
Yep, I agree with that.
He'd be, he'd be good in, for a lot of reasons.
All right, so that's my update on board openings. And chapter six, safety, Rick, we have a new
Yeah, and I, I haven't, I'll be honest with you, I haven't even looked at it. I just received this, it's, it's probably, I probably received, I may have received it illegally. Somebody shared it with, with a lot of people and you pay for this. So I have ordered hard copies, it's just that the warehouse has been closed for ILA. So let me pull it up here and this will be my first look at it too. I, I saw an early version. Didn't like it at all, but we'll see if they, if they made it any better and
So here's my question, if we didn't necessarily get it through the proper channel, should we even be discussing it right now?
Well, here's the other side of that, Sophia, is, is that I've been told that our, that at least a piece of our grant, our per capita grant for the year is going to depend on this particular version, so. I can't do it if I don't have it. But typically, you can't share an electronic version without permission. I don't even know if I've got it opened up here.
Well, I mean, do we want to just
That's kind of what I'm wondering, like
I'm happy to table it.
Tableting this and then
I'm worried, we're long on this, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to table it.
No, that's fine, I will take a motion to table this, we can move it to the next meeting.
They're moved.
Yep.
Second.
All right, I gotta do, Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Oh, yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
All right, and me, yes, okay, so if there's anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, and I gotta do it again, so, Michael?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Oh, yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
And Samantha, we are adjourned at 6:08.
Thanks.